I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, quite frankly, this is my first experience interviewing an attorney from a municipal position. I've only ever had to consult an attorney, interview attorneys for personal business. So what's the difference? Aside from, I didn't have a name tag. This is Kathy, she's second experienced person. I have seniority. Suzanne has, she's in the middle of her second term. I'm toward the end of my third.
Kathy on the third.
She's on her third. So, and we've had representation, of course, and we inherited her. So, tell us a little bit about your experience and what your expectation is of the town if you are our representatives.
Sure. I'll start. My name is Amy Chau. I'm a lawyer from Crumlin Woodson. I chair our municipal law group. And I like to think of the Woodson Practice Law as being a small niche practice representing towns and cities, both large and small, that really gamut, within the context of a larger law firm. So what do I mean by that? If I can unpack that a little bit. We practice very much like a small collaborative group, I would say, that are, depending on sort of regular municipal practitioners who do this 90% to 100% of the time, we probably have five to seven of us. And we're always in each other's offices. We work very collaboratively and we find that that actually is a benefit to the client, both from a cost perspective and from a result perspective. So we have this group of municipal practitioners. I'm lucky I get to work with Ben. Every day we have a couple cases going together. And then we also have a very deep bench. So what I mean by a small niche practice within the context of a larger law firm, Crumlin Woodson is a large law firm, as you probably know. We have over 100 attorneys who practice law in Maine, New Hampshire, and Flagstaff, Arizona. And from our, from the firm perspective, we have a couple things going for us, other than size. The size gives us depth, so that if you need anything very specific that is outside of our wheelhouse, and sometimes, many times towns do, we can go right to the source and get targeted assistance for you. We can always there. But also, Crumlin Woodson has a history, it was founded in 1965, of representing public sector entities. And so unlike another large law firm that might wish to represent you, Crumlin Woodson has had 50, almost going on 60 years of experience representing towns, school departments, school units, quasi-governmental entities, and tribal nations since we begun. And the tribal nations practice is really interesting because it's a different sort of sector of governance. But it's all about local governance within a particular context. So there's a lot of synergy that happens as a result of the fact that a lot of our, the founding of our firm is grounded in having represented towns or quasi-municipal entities. So we have a lot of expertise, for example, all across the board. Many, we probably have, I wouldn't say the most number of attorneys, but we have a lot of attorneys who know FOA, the Freedom of Access Act, very, very well. Because we represent public entities, we have to. There are a lot of attorneys who actually do a lot of constitutional practice because as a local government, you're a state actor, right? So the Constitution, that's the fun part of municipal law. Maybe not for the client, but as a practitioner, it can be interesting. Just as an example, we had, I don't know if you've experienced this, but we've had a number of clients who experienced Zoom bombing events during their public comment period. Very, very significant. That happened actually on September 11th. Many municipalities actually muted Monday nights, and there was a coordinated Zoom bombing event that affected a number of our clients. And we had to really respond to that very quickly. So that's, you know, just a smattering of our background and happy to talk about how we approach our work. But Ben, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add at this point?
Well, I think that was a great encapsulation of our firm. I mean, I think the one point that I always like to highlight is I think that, you know, on any particular issue, on any particular matter, it isn't just Amy's experience or my experience that we're bringing to bear. I think it's the deep bench of municipal attorneys and attorneys from other disciplines that we bring to bear on, you know, any issue that we're working with the town with.
So, do you, Trish, what was the smallest town that you've been working with and around? Is that you say Port, like where you guys were located? Or, I know you worked with the school in West Bath, but...
Let's see, we worked with the town of Lebanon.
We represent Alma, I think Alma's pretty small.
Alma's a pretty small town. Down in Scottsdale, we've represented. And we see, Oxpeck is growing.
Yeah.
So that's a bigger, bigger community.
Represent some smaller towns in southwest remain, Sweden, Sweden's pretty small.
Yes. Brugel.
What do you see their common needs in those communities?
I would say, well, we represent a number of communities that don't have zoning. So that's a, that's a common thing. I know not all small towns don't have zoning, but many, many do. And so there, that is a, that is a really interesting thing to work with because development can arrive in your town in very different ways.
We're writing all of our ordinances, so that's a key component for that as well.
And also the impact of LD 2003, the growth act that you all, of course, know about, is a big sea change in how municipalities sort of manage growth and, you know, provide for housing and that kind of thing. So that, I would say that, those are, those are big, some common themes. Do you think of any other common themes?
Any loopholes that we should avoid?
Holes, the loophole law.
Yeah, I mean, I kind of think it runs the gamut. And, you know, interestingly enough, I feel like I've been working with some of our smaller towns on some fairly unique issues right now, like cable franchising in small communities, litigation in some cases. So I think it really varies and can include some unique issues.
One of the, one of the questions that came up a couple weeks ago was, because Crumlin Woodson does represent the school, is there any kind of issue that would arise with representing both?
So we are lucky to have relationships and as, because we are a public sector practice group, we do represent school districts and towns alike that overlap. And what I would say is it usually works out absolutely just fine. We would not, there are communities, sometimes there are municipal school units with towns that sort of had a history of doing this. And if that were to be the case, we would not, we wouldn't throw our hat in the ring. So we did do our due diligence. We did, I spoke with my colleague, who has a close relationship with the superintendent, to give them a courtesy call that we would, we're going to be responding to the RFP. And so they know that that's happening. They didn't raise any issues. And the way we dealt with conflict situations, they don't come up very often. If they do come up, as between school unit and town, sometimes there might be a budget type issue. Again, we haven't had that become, be a problem for the most part with the communities that we represent. But we would navigate sort of the conflict waiver process with both of our clients, you know, if and when a conflict were to arise. So in other words, if there were a conflict, we would notify you, we'd notify the school. We would see if there were a way, since we're, since you're both current clients, for you to give waivers. And in most cases, that works pretty well.
We had to do that this year.
Oh, you did? Okay. Did it work well?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
A question. Do either of you, would you be our attorneys, one or both of you?
Do either of you?
Would you be, if you were second, would you be the judge?
Yeah, yes, you would be your actual team.
And you don't represent the school?
I do not. I do not do any schooling.
Another question that came up. As we were having our initial discussions, a member of the public reminded us that billing can differ among firms. So if Christine were to call you and it took 15 minutes, do you call about an hour or how do you break?
Oh, my goodness, no.
No.
You call it 10 minutes, right?
We bill in a 10 of an hour or a six-minute increment. So 15 would be, we probably would round up and that would be a point three. It would either be a point two or a point three. If it were 12 minutes, we, it would be a point two.
Right, okay.
So that's, yeah, that is how we generally work, yes.
Good information to have. Mostly nobody talks for an hour. David, you have?
Just, I'm a well-versed in, I'm sure in contracts, like with the local waste of schools a lot, the cable TV companies or there's people in those that came to that stuff in your business?
Yes, well, those and Ben specifically can speak to cable TV, but tell the police, yes. And still lawyers. Yes, that's actually a great, somewhere's a great example of how we call upon subject matter experts within our firm. You know, we have an energy group and they do a lot of really, you know, their power purchase agreements and all sorts of things that I will tell you I don't do and not an expert in. But they do that like very regularly. And so if you, and they've served our municipal clients as well as private funds, energy clients. So we've found that that's been a really nice synergy to explore.
Well, our franchise agreement's up in two years with the extending, so. Well, then they were good to work with, we just build out.
Is it charter?
It's extended.
Extended, confessed.
Confirmed, yeah. And two rows were left off our initial franchise agreement. And it took about two years and Mr. Bunchler was on the telecom task force. And we were able to get whole agreements in place and get people in it that hadn't had it during COVID.
Am I right that you've had a tower built or approved for in the recent past?
For the county.
For the county. So it's going to be cited in West Bath, right?
Yes, on the top of the big hill. And one of the things we wanted to make sure that we shared in, because they took it from 200 feet, which was commonly firms used down to 150, which allowed them to then sell space.
Co-located, right.
And so we want to make sure that we share in that process.
Get your...
Since we gave them the land.
Right.
Jamie, do you have a question?
I'm just novice about billing and things. Do you bill mileage? And is there a different rate if you're off hours like tonight? Would that affect the billing for us?
So we do bill for mileage. It's the IRS rate, which I don't know what that is now. And we are, municipal lawyers are a different breed because many of us are out several nights a week. Because most, we know that most of you have your board meetings in the evening. We don't bill at a different rate. We don't double charge because we're working late. But we don't give you a discount either if we're working with you at 10 o'clock at night. It's the same rate, whether it's 7:00 in the morning or 7:00 early.
And do you do Zoom if those are possible?
Zoom is, yes, and very efficient and works very well now. We do routine, routinely do Zoom calls. When you have a planning consultant or a code officer, sometimes you need to put a plan up on a screen somewhere. It's, it really works very well. You're able to put plans on a screen and talk things through and I've gotten better.
I'm not putting a TV here.
The feature that allows you to draw and point to things. I'm not an expert. Ben would be better about that, I guess.
I mean, you all got pretty good at COVID.
Yes, that's true.
For each of you, what's the most interesting municipal conundrum that you've been part of?
Oh, wow. One question.
I know what it's.
You go ahead.
You don't have the names, names or town names?
No, I do a lot of work along the shore. And one of the areas of expertise that I developed, have developed over the years is public beach access rights, shoreline zoning. I find that, you know, land is sort of like, property law is sort of as energized, I think, as family law. Because, you know, if you're not fighting about your family members, you're fighting about your property. And with good reason. And I don't mean that to be critical of folks who want to protect their own property and develop it the way they want to. But as a municipality, you have to regulate things, to keep things safe and to make sure that things are managed well. In the space of access to our shore, which is a precious natural resource, there are folks on the private property side who are shorefront owners who believe they should have, you know, exclusive access. And then there are those who have always used that area but don't own the property. And I find that battle, if you will, a really interesting conundrum. I do see both sides. I mean, I am a public beach access advocate for municipalities, but I, I do it through the lens of understanding very well that there are private property rights and they should be respected. And if the public is going to come onto land that is deemed to be private, that it should be done so respectfully and it should be managed well. And sometimes municipalities can play a role in that and your community loves you for it forever.
You're open.
Conundrum is a good point.
We're back, conundrum. I mean, there's a few things that immediately come to mind. But I mean, you know, I was involved in some litigation recently involving a particular use within the shoreline zone that lasted several years with a number of very interesting personalities involved and very public on the news. And, you know, grappling with some very interesting procedural issues, multiple appeals, both administrative and to the courts. And I think, you know, resolving those issues and the dispute about this particular use in a way that, you know, addressed the public's concerns, the town's concerns, was a, was a very difficult and protracted process, as it often is with these types of things.
Yeah. Can I understand that? My question just went up my head. Oh, that's because I didn't want to ask it. I would maybe tactfully describe a situation we've had with the revaluation of the town in the last year and a half. And so can you say something about your experience with reval and assessing issues and all that stuff?
Sure, yeah. I mean, I have represented a number of municipalities in tax abatement matters. Appeals that have made their way to the State Board of Property Tax Review. Appeals that went through the municipal officers and then to Superior Board and then since up to the law court. So I've done a lot of work on that end and then, you know, advising towns on the front end with respect to assessment issues and tree growth issues and, you know, run the gamut.
How about a different twist with that, that the reval company may be underperforming the contract?
That's interesting. I was just going to say, on the front end, I have been involved in sort of the bidding process and the procurement process of the reval company. And seeing that play out, not in ideal circumstances. So that's not in, I'm not going to say it's a common thing, but how successful your revaluation process goes can depend a lot upon, you know, not only who's providing the services, but a lot of close sort of monitoring of that front end process. Because it always plays out and, you know, depending on how it's been structured, it will seem more fair or less fair to various parts of your community. Some of that is inevitable, but some of that is like that basic equity fairness thing.
And why are you higher terms?
Yeah, somewhere, unfortunately, on the town, right?
But you do have experience with the land use, shoreline use. You also have experience with...
We are, it's the bread and butter of what we do is land use, shoreline zoning, permitting disputes. Ben talks about litigation. Most of our litigation is land use related. We do have, you know, personalities who we have experience and expertise in employment, collective bargaining, doing employee investigations, wage and hour issues. You may not have any of those issues, but we have a lot of experience in those issues. But I would say a common element is our land use practice and the way that that makes its way into the courts through your various...
You have experience with things like moorings and docks and that sort of thing.
Yes, a lot.
We have moorings and that stuff.
That's good. Do you have a harbor and waterfront?
We do have, we have a harbor and basket.
Okay.
But we don't, we have not had extensive land.
Okay. I personally, some of the towns I work with have, a number of towns that I've worked with harbor masters and they have harbor and waterfront ordinances. I had a mooring dispute that went to litigation a couple of years ago. So familiar with the statute and the issues that can arise regarding moorings. Also very familiar with the Wharf and Wears Act, which comes into play. I'm a, do you guys select one that you...
We work with waterfront.
Okay. But do you, when you approve...
Specifically as a town, but there are people that have waterfront.
Okay. So do you have private docks that need to go to you as a board for Wharf and Wears Act approval? You don't do that?
No, that's going through the...
The planning board?
It's been mediated very good for them and through the code port officer.
Okay.
And that harbor and basket also has some...
Okay. So your ordinance must deal with that in that specific way? So, yes, we represent a number of coastal towns and so docks, wards, both commercial, residential, moorings, within a mooring field, all of those issues are ones that we have experience dealing with.
Well, and that's kind of what we're looking for when we, the ordinances that we currently have are antiquated. And I think we're looking to bring them up to date, but also ensure that as we bring them up to date, we're doing what we should to secure harmony as we move forward.
So I don't usually call out a particular community, but because they're a close member of yours, we do represent the town of Harpswell, which has multiple moorage issues, as you can imagine.
And wharves.
And then wharves and docks and, and is a, you know, vibrant commercial fishing, you know, community. So a number of issues we've dealt with as well.
Yes. They do seem to have issues.
They do.
It's very few more people as well. Is, is there anything that you would like to add? Anything you'd love to add, Ben?
Want to start us off?
Sure, sure. Well, what I will say is when we decided that we wanted to put in to represent the town of West Bath, a few things came to mind to me immediately. I think we don't just respond to all of these. We're fairly choosy. And I would say one area of expertise and one of the reasons we wanted to respond was you are in the same area of, you know, that Harpswell is in, in this sort of mid-coast area. We have quite a bit of experience, as I said, along the shore, dealing with those specific land use issues. And not just for big towns. I mean, we like our small towns a lot. And so this seemed to fit kind of our overarching, the way we like to practice. And hopefully, you know, it needs to be a good fit for everyone. So I think it's good that you're interviewing a number of folks. But that was what stuck out for me personally with why they wanted to, for our hat.
How about you, Ben?
Yeah, I'll echo that. I mean, you know, most of my practice really is working with smaller communities in southwestern Maine. And this is, you know, sort of the size and structure of the type of community that I'm often representing.
The three citizens who are here are very frequently here. So any final questions from you or public?
She had cookies.
Do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Really appreciate it, your time and your answers.
It was a pretty dry out here. I started to wonder if I had the wrong, you know, Google address. Because I was like, are we in a residential area? And then I saw that you're beautiful building, so.
Yes. We don't have a lot of business, commercial business here. Although I think I have a capita quota on car repairs. Such a mess. We have a lot of them there.
If you have any follow-up questions, please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming so much. Thanks, stay here.
Thanks for coming.
Our next people are coming in.
They're here.
They're here.
Oh, they're here?
Yep.
Oh, is that why you gave us, that's why you gave...
Gave her a chair?
I wasn't going to give the job.
He tried to look me in the back. I may be doing skeleton here now, but we're skeletoning around. Come on, you don't have to skeleton anymore.
Hi there.
Hi, good morning.
Could you tell us who you are?
Yeah, so I'm Brady Burns and I'm associated here at Skeleton Tater Abbott.
And I'm Amy Dietrich. I know you just had another Amy in here. Skeleton Tater Abbott, I'm a partner. I practice primarily in employment and municipal law type of issues. And then Brady has more of a specialty in the land use zoning ordinances that side of it.
I'm a municipal and a huge generalist. Do a ton of work with towns and cities as well as private citizens who are being represented before towns and cities. But I would say around 80% of my practice is working with and around main municipalities and kind of governments, as well as on the kind of general administrative law side with permitting and land use issues. law side with permitting and land use issues.
You're right, I suppose so. So what is, what do you feel are the most important issues facing towns today, specifically the towns our size?
Yeah, and I'd actually speak to that first. I have an opinion, probably has some thoughts as well, but there have been a lot of very recent changes to statutory schemes that have had a direct impact on local governments and small towns especially, whether it's LD 2003 and the ongoing rollout of that and changes to the state's housing law, which that's kind of fits and starts with changes, you know, in terms of effective dates affecting smaller towns versus larger towns. But the landscape for housing regulation has been, I think, the most recent issue that I've seen affecting a lot of, not only our clients, but just around the state. The need for rapid changes to land use ordinances to accommodate those new schemes has been a huge burden for especially towns of this size. Even towns that really want to work in good faith to address the housing issues that that legislation, you know, very much is trying to speak to. I think right before the seismic changes that came down the pike from that statutory change, local canvas continues to be an ongoing regulatory issue. We still have municipal clients who are continuing to grapple with their own local regulation, even as we're now, what geez, eight years after the initial rollout of some of those laws. I think coming down the line, renewable energy regulation, electrical transmission regulation, and here on the coast, aquaculture regulation are things that are emerging issues, each that I have fortunately had opportunities in the recent past to work with. But for West Bath specifically, I think, you know, beginning, really, I see this community as kind of a gateway to, you know, the stretch of coastline that we really think of as the key pieces of Maine's working waterfront and that tension between landowners and business. But that regulatory scheme, the changing regulatory landscape on the water when it comes to those businesses, I think is something that has affected a lot of coastal communities and will continue to do so. But it's, the through line through those, I think, is this tension in relationship between local regulation and state statutory schemes. And as one changes, changes need to be made below. So I think that tension will always be there, but those are some of the most recent issues that I've dealt with so far.
Well, I can speak to the more people-focused version of that. We sort of divide and conquer in terms of Brady deals with everything that is on the land and I deal with the human beings. And so one of the things that I tend to see in towns of this size, and actually smaller and bigger, is we have a lot of town employees that have been with the places for decades and they have, over time, they're all wearing six different hats. You have somebody who is the only person that knows how to make sure voting happens the right way, who knows how to do the assessing, who knows how to send out the paperwork, the only person that knows how to onboard an employee. And we have a lot of those employees who are getting to the age of retirement. And so trying to be thoughtful about how to make sure to transition all of that work to the next generation of employees is something a lot of towns are dealing with. And then there's also, you know, just to use the word raft, I'm not sure I can use that, but there are so many new employment laws that come out every year that we need to make sure that we're constantly looking at our policies to make sure what we were doing yesterday is still legal today. And, you know, how are we going to anticipate paid family leave? What do you have to do? What are your, what kind of education do you need to do? Just things like that. We are staying on top of how all of those laws change, how we, your boxes of people, you are employers. How do we do right by our employees? How do we make sure that the town operates efficiently, thoughtfully for the taxpayers as well as the people that are in the building?
Thank you. You have any questions? Is that it? Okay. So I asked the other folks this. So how do you deal with, how do you bill for a telephone call that doesn't take a whole hour? How do you, how do you break those things off?
I can answer that.
Yeah, go for it.
So I imagine you'll hear the same thing from most law firms, what we all do is we bill in six-minute increments. So if you were to call me, I would hit my timer and we would talk for however long and then when I picked the phone down, I stopped the timer and of course the town is only built for the amount of times that we talk. And then we bill every month.
And of course, the folks who are in here, Romeo, are really big firms. You're a smaller. How do you handle the vast array of issues that can come up in municipal government?
That's a great question. Well, although you only have two of us here today, we are more people than that. We have about a thousand?
Fourteen.
Fourteen employees, fourteen lawyers, about more employees than that. And so there is overlap in our areas of specialty. Certainly, I know those folks who are from government with some, we don't have an army of associates that would, you know, that are available, but because of that, you are not going to get a voice lead off on some first-year associate, which is what tends to happen with big firms. If you were to retain Skeleton here at Abbot, we would primarily be dealing with you folks and your town management. We wouldn't voice that off on a junior associate and we always have backup coverage if, for, God forbid, one of us goes on a vacation. That's not allowed.
You go on vacation.
It's not yours tough, because all lawyers want to take time off, but it's right when wardens are going out, people are going for election.
Yes, well, there's always something going on.
Usual lawyers tend to look at us too quickly, we're awake at night, we're here to meet anyone.
Yes. So what's your engagement? We're, we're in the midst of probably rewriting the very, our ordinances. And, but how comfortable are you in managing that process for a town?
Intensive. I've, in the past, worked with communities of various sizes, some substantially larger than West Bath, in working to harmonize existing ordinances, including, you know, I think a common problem that are, or issue that communities often are dealing with, especially with changing land use dynamics, is a desire to make sure that all of our ordinances are talking to each other in a cohesive way. You might have subdivision regulation over here, a shoreline zoning ordinance over here, a separate land use ordinance over here, site plans and.
No, that's not the first one.
It's, it's, it's because of the way, I think it's partially due to the state's history. Really kind of when those regulations came out kind of piecemeal, we, you know, many, many, I'd say most communities were running into that same problem kind of at the same time, really realizing that an update is needed because, especially in the shoreline zoning context, especially in the subdivision context, those changes are often much more imposed from above and also are, tend to be kind of styled into separate regulatory schemes within a community. So harmonizing that language so that your general zoning ordinance talks to your shoreline zoning ordinance or your subdivision regulation is something that I have done in the past. It is work that requires strong communication between your legal team and your municipal officials and officers, your planning board and the select board, your town staff. Because ultimately, my job, you know, our job as, as land use attorneys, as municipal attorneys, is to help you to realize the policy vision that you're trying to achieve and ensure that your goals are reflected in those documents. And ensuring ultimately that those documents will stand up to scrutiny if, you know, if they are challenged down the road or any other things like that. So that is something that frankly I enjoy doing. I'm a local government, very, long before I was a lawyer, I trained as a civics teacher and I've always been a local government. I've served on the urban city council, Amy is currently serving in ours, consolidated assessing and zoning board appeals, what do they call that now?
It's the regulatory advisory board. So I, I hear the tax appeals.
So the, the passion runs deep by the, I think, understanding and working with local officials and understanding the pressures that you all face and what your priorities are and using my expertise to help realize those roles is something that I really value. And I think we're a firm that's of a size that allows us to have closer relationships with our municipal clients, allows us to, you know, have, you know, these kind of conversations, you know, one-on-one, three-on-one and face-to-face. It's something that I put a big value on.
I'm going to interject. We have three of our regular attenders of our meetings and one of them, who incidentally is my brother, is, is, has racist skin, so.
The same question as earlier was, you well versed in contracts with cable TV, solid waste, solar, issues of time I had with solar perhaps? Maybe you've dealt with some of the contracts negotiations?
So our, one of the partners at our firm, Bill Skelton, his practice these days seems to largely be dealing with those very kind of contracts and real estate issues. In my own experience, my, my area of expertise hews closer toward general municipal and land use issues and not within the actual transaction of a deal. But one of the benefits of engaging with our firm, much like any of the other kind of inter- larger-sized firms, is that when you engage with us, you engage with all of our attorneys and between the fourteen of us, there is a broad area of expertise, including in public contracting and those, the specific regulatory issues that come with especially renewable energy issues. That's something that our firm deals with a lot of the cases.
Also, just to your point, we represent Oxford County and so we have quite a bit of experience. There's been a lot of cell tower, public service contracts and that kind of work happening up in that region.
I mean, like redecorating the contract at Casella, who was in town, the service, recycling the center and things like that.
Yeah.
And new contract with Comcast, those type of contracts.
And with your experience in assisting with revaluation?
So I have not done more of a revaluation. I do, like I said, I was mentioned, I sit on the assessing board, so I do have quite a bit of experience on the end where people are questioning their assessments, but certainly managing that process and helping negotiate whatever contract it is. But a firm that would do those revaluations would be well within what we can, you know.
How about you have any contract that maybe didn't go as well as planned?
You never do, do they?
I don't have experience yet, but I do now, so I don't know what the previous one was, but asking me how the situation.
Yeah, well, you know, I think that one thing that lawyers know how to do is look at a contract and try to figure out how do you enforce it or negotiate for recompense when it hasn't gone as negotiated. I'm sorry to hear that you have experience, it sounds like a steep learning curve. Painful.
Steep, I heard.
How far are you, you know, in that process?
We're on cleanup.
Okay, okay, so it's already happened and now it's?
On cleanup.
You can image controls are good.
Loss of phase with community, I mean, there's a lot of hard learning components that came with this.
So much of what you do is communicating with the public and sharing information. I'm sure you do a phone request all the time when the public gets up in arms about things like that. That's, that can be so time-consuming for people who are volunteering their time.
You get three fifty or two fifty, or we get seventeen cents an hour.
It's probably easier to do it constantly.
Is it, is it done?
Before taxes?
If you assume I.
Yeah, that's, and that's tough, but I think that one of the things that we try and do is help our, help our county clients, our municipal clients, our county clients navigate through those difficult, not only legal matters, but PR matters where you're trying to make sure that the people have faith in you as the town's government, that you know what you're doing, you've got your, sort of finger on the pulse.
And a lot of our public clients have been longtime clients of the firm and I think one of the, the reasons that we've retained those clients over time is we've been able to work with them continually to ensure that, you know, on an ongoing basis, as much as possible processes are in place, we're available, you know, kind of prophylactically to ensure that as, you know, as things are happening, as they're being developed, systems are being put in place, you know, ensuring that on an ongoing basis down the road, we can avoid problems, you know, and certainly, like any municipal government, you're dealing with things right now, that any, any firm that you engage with will have to bring themselves up in speed with and address those ongoing problems. But I hope would be that whoever you work with would work with you to ensure that, you know, as you continue to do some important work, they're working to do, if they can, to make sure that, you know, not only each of you are a fulfills and the best practices, you know, of whatever you're dealing with, but are an ongoing resource to ensure that as you're dealing with the problems, you're, you're getting good advice and able to address them.
Well, it's paramount that the community has faith in the government and that we need to make sure that we rebuild that foundation.
Absolutely.
Well, and evaluations are just one of those lightning rods that can just, people can feel so strongly about it because it's their wallet and it's, you know, one of the most, especially if you have people on a case they come, you have, I imagine you're feeling, well, I don't know.
Everybody's intent is fixed by somebody.
Well, you see so many, you know, you've got a lot of new people moving in, you've got people that have lived here for forty years and, but they all matter.
Yeah.
Right, right? And the revaluation is the perfect lightning rod for those issues to come up.
Has the, all of the combinations of emotional investment, your citizenship, your town services, your personal property, your sense of home, all of those things are emotional issues as well as factual. And probably emotions count more than the facts sometimes. So I ask the other folks, I like stories. What's the most interesting conundrum that you have faced professionally?
You know, I think one of, I'll just begin, I won't speak for you. One of the big challenges that we always have as lawyers with elected bodies is how to navigate the politics and the law. And so there have, and I, obviously we can't share confidential information, there have our cases with every lawyer's life, including mine, where you find yourself in an area where politics have come before the law and you're trying to help a town or any sort of municipality do right by their citizens, but you have people who come to the table with an agenda that is different from public service. And so I'll just say that that is something that I'm very attuned to and is something I think we all approach really delicately and it's really challenging, it's important to do right and be respectful, but it can make for some very lengthy and unpleasant and difficult decisions.
I think for me, it's, and specifically in the municipal law space, oftentimes, and it really doesn't matter where you are in the state, when you're, when you're dealing with the local government, really of any size, the issues that are being faced by your community are always hyper-specific and they may, there may be similar situations that have happened elsewhere, but what is happening here is specific to here and the roadmap to get from where you are to where you're trying to be is going to be specific to you. So much of municipal law as a profession really feels sometimes like the Wild West. You know, even though we have, I think, five hundred and four organized communities in Maine, oftentimes when you're looking for case laws directly on point for this particular issue of ordinance interpretation, you are very likely to not find what you need. So a lot of my job. So a lot of my job on a daily basis as towns, especially, you know, boards that are trying to be dynamic, are trying to address a specific problem or are trying to, to really be, you know, fully aware and addressing something in a new way. Figuring out the contours of what you can do or what you may do in that often very murky legal framework is something that does lead to some conundrums sometimes and, you know, giving, giving advice based on the information you have, but also ensuring that whatever you're doing is defensible, protectable, and is, again, getting you as close as you can to reaching your goals. But it's the uniqueness of each community that, you know, I rarely deal with the same issue twice. Even though, you know, the universe of issues is similar sometimes, it's, it really is something for everybody.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah. How much of your firm's track, seeing on top of new laws and rules that come down from Augusta, that affects towns most bad, how do you see how those changes at the firm?
Yeah, so when it comes to municipal issues, specifically both Amy and I believe are members of a group that's called GROMA, which is a municipal legal group that is organized apart by the Maine Municipal Association. So, you know, we have an ongoing relationship with, with folks at MMA who are often, but not always, the first, the first kind of organization that will see things coming down the pipe and, you know, communicating that to municipal attorneys. So part of that, you know, the, the main legal community is small, the main municipal legal community is a bit smaller, and the, the road to Augusta is, is pretty short for, for most of us in terms of, you know, our, our knowledge, both of the people up there and the issues that are coming down the line. So there are, we have ongoing, you know, whether it's monthly or quarterly opportunities to hear updates on those things, but also just continually, you know, working to refresh ourselves in each new legislative session to, you know, to see what might be coming. And the most recent example I have of that would be, there was a recent change, there was an act regarding mobile home regulation and the regulation of mobile homes and other in locations where single-family housing is otherwise allowed. You know, it made some splash in some communities, but it's, it's coming right down the pipe. And it was one that I think has, for better or worse, caught some land use attorneys sleeping as they're trying to advise their communities. But, you know, being, being in a position where we are getting a steady stream of new information is something that we continually work to do. But MMA, I think for most municipal attorneys, is usually the, the first stop for hearing changes in the law.
Okay.
It also occurred to me, oh, Jane, go ahead.
I was just curious, do Abby from one of your service in the license section?
I have not, no.
No, I don't, I'm sure. I served on the Auburn City Council for, for a time, but I have not served at the council.
Thanks. What's the process? We've had one firm who's been our town attorney since before I was on the board, about nine years ago. So the relationship is long and deep and they know a lot about us. What's the process of transitioning from one firm to the next, do you consider?
I can take this one. Well, for example, I, I don't know who your previous attorney is, but we've been taking over quite a few managers from LaNcha and Weber because they're closing down. They do a lot of municipal work, and so the way in which so far we've transitioned those cases is they give us your hard copy file. Typically, your attorneys will retain a hard copy file sometimes chronically, and those files are all organized chronologically usually. So typically what I do is I take a look at, put it in the front of the file and see what the most urgent issues are, and I'll go back and look at the most recent minutes to see what are the issues. Of course, I can't see what you've had executive sessions about, but we can get a general sense of what the issues are, and we would certainly be able to meet with your town manager or invite you to get up to speed on anything.
I have a question. Good question. Do you have any questions for us?
I know you mentioned we're having some, or you mentioned some of your ordinances are aging, I think is the term to use. Antiquated, thank you. Is that something that the town is hoping to address, whether on a shorter, medium-term?
We have, we're working with a consultant from, what's the, MPO, and he's, he's been on work with us since, not with the plan, but.
Primarily your land use ordinances.
Well, we did a cop plan, we just compared a cop.
Correct.
And that was first, and now this is second in the queue of achievements.
The, the goal was to have the land use ordinances updated in a way that they would complement and work with the comprehensive plan, which they, part of the antiquation was that those two things didn't always go together. And the comp plan really hadn't been part of the overall planning process. So we had hoped in this process to have that happen more efficiently and effectively. When we're doing, we now have a comp plan that anybody could read and understand.
Yeah.
Well, and that helps. The orders are lacking in a term that you call cohesive. They have significant issues with that, and they're not, they don't work amongst themselves.
Yeah.
Well, because over time, things have been added and they haven't necessarily been referred back. One problem was solved, but could create another one here, and you don't necessarily anticipate solving this problem is going to create this problem. So we're trying to bring those things together and have, have experience with, with that? What kinds of experience?
Yeah, so I, I've, I've done that exact kind of work, again, for, for municipal clients, involving kind of, something, something very similar to the posture that you guys are in right now, where, you know, you have a vision of where you're trying to get to and a realization that your current documents are either somehow working across purposes or simply not addressing the issues that you're trying to have them address, or just because of kind of the accumulated layers of kind of that old regulation over the course of many years, you have definitions that may not speak to each other, or some things are undefined or not properly defined. But that process, it requires, I think, both an understanding of, it requires a legal understanding, one, you know, understanding a clear cause of effect of if it says this, then this will happen. But also having an attention to, again, the goals of the document and having a baseline understanding of really the intentions that you're trying to achieve with your, your planning documents and your land use ordinances. And that sometimes is not something that comes, you know, they don't teach it in law school, I guess. It really comes from, I think, either having a planning background or, you know, kind of baseline understanding in the goals of local government. I'm not a planner by trade, but certainly have a strong understanding of the goals of planning and a background in local government. I think the, the delivery of, of a consolidated land use ordinance product, I think it's, the process is both iterative, but it also, it requires a, you know, if you have two definitions for the same thing, you have to figure out, well, do we want it to be this or do we want it to be this? For some combination of both, why was it this and why was it this? And what work is it doing in your documents? And again, that can be, it can be a time-consuming process depending on the size of your ordinances, but the end product of that work is something that is, something that's actually used. And it's something that's useful not just to, you know, a developer, it's something that's useful to any citizen working yourselves.
When you pick up a new town or a new client, do you ever go over their ordinance to see if something's glaring, like missing that you think that they should have in there or?
So there's, there's a tension between wanting to be proactive and wasting your legal dollar. So most, in my experience, it's you, the members of the select board, members of the planning board, who have a, usually acute sense of what your immediate needs are. Sometimes those are unknown, unknowns, right? And those are often, not always, but often relatively not obvious. You can usually spot them, you know, oh, you're missing, you don't, you don't have any subdivision regulations, you know, something like that, you know? So it's not, it's not something that I could truly do in terms of dissecting, you know, dissecting each ordinance that you have, but it's partly as a community process between, myself and the town to identify if there are specific concerns that you've already identified that could inform my number of you.
I think your panel has a, a good running tally of prioritizing that.
Yeah.
Part of, part of the issue from my perspective has been, it's very difficult to codify intentions. So what was the intention ten years ago when this ordinance was created compared to? What is the need today with the person who's trying to do whatever? And I think, I think that's been difficult to ascertain. So I'm hopeful that we will get the intentions sufficiently codified that they'll go at least match with the compliment, which is probably the best way to say what the community's intentions are.
Certainly.
Right, trying to make sure there are no negative unintended effects.
Oh, it's always. Well, as people were changing, changed the legality of those assets.
Yeah.
Or, and we've seen, yes, we've seen that in the, in come, in the ordinances that need to be addressed.
I, I would say that's, that's why seventy-five percent of the work in consolidating ordinances is in your definitions, because that, there, there's so much power in that section because it really sets out the, you know, the scoping of really every important thing that you're dealing with. And most often, it's those definitions that are the intention. And that is, it's a, it's a legal process, but it's also a policy process because, again, something could be legal, but it could not arrive, it could actually not be achieving the goal of the thing we're actually trying to investigate. And, and again, it's that, that two-track process with any municipal issue of, of come, can you do it? Should you do it? Is that the thing you want to do? And I think it's something that we'd be able to assist you with on all of those steps, certainly.
I'm curious about your experience with the marijuana laws. We don't have any retail sales here as of yet. I'm sure somebody's quite a lot to do that. What's the deal?
Yeah, it's the overlay of municipal authority and regulation and state requirements is unique for cannabis regulation.
Because it's still against the law federally.
Yeah, and it's, so the, yeah, it's, and it continues to be a, I think I said before, a dynamic space, but.
Well, and one, people have a lot of hidden stuff, too.
Absolutely.
You know, that sort of legality and that, again, the externalities bringing those businesses into town.
We don't have a waste department.
Yeah.
That's kind of a problem.
It, it raises substantial land use questions as well as, you know, as I just said, you know, more, more general kind of just governance questions as well. The state regulatory regime really allows municipalities to have much more free of a hand to impose specific and very limited, you get to choose your own adventure when it comes to cannabis regulation. And I think the, the state statutes that, they're, the new ones that were active were , in fact, especially when it comes to recreational use, of really empowering communities with their homeable authority to, you know, one, affirmatively opt-in and then only opt into those things that you are wanting to opt-in to. But then on the, the medical side, which is, for better or worse, a very distinct legal framework that was, you know, pre-existing before the, the recreational changes, those regulations are a little different. And they, again, require an understanding on, from, on the front end from the town, like what is your goal here? And what are you really, what level of regulation are you looking to impose? Are you happy with the status quo it is right now? Do you want to preserve that? Or are you looking to, you know, grow into a, a different direction or, well, we want to attract these kind of businesses, but not these? The state statutes give a fair amount of freedom when you want to do that, but there are limitations, especially on the medical side. So, you know, I've run trainings on, on these issues and have helped towns craft their own local regulatory regimes for both medical and recreational cannabis regulations and something that, because it is such a, has a lot of bits and pieces, it's something that I really enjoy doing because it, again, it gets to those questions of what, what do we want our town to look like in ten years? And it really is a new space for local regulation.
Is it something you're hearing people sort of banging down the door to get going?
I don't think so, because there's thirty-seven in math that we can go to if we need to. They're just, they're, I, they must be married because they're literally one after the other coming down state roads.
So I'm from Auburn originally, I live in Houston now, but it was a similar situation where Auburn very early was like, yeah, like, let's, let's see what happens. And so they just kind of kicked the regulatory door down, like, come to us. So they ended up with a lot very early, and I think the, they had kind of the first adopter advantage, kind of like, you know, maybe Bath did, but now it's, they've, they've had to kind of modulate that over time. But it's been interesting seeing how Houston's had to regulate in relation to their, their next generation.
We don't have a waste department. And I, and I, I have to believe it's just a matter of time before each and every one of them have some sort of infraction against them from, so we don't have the capacity to handle that. But we also don't have a no-ordinance group. Well, that actually is our ordinance, not having or is off the out, or is keeping it as a, in theory, our ordinance, right?
It's fortunate that the law was written that way because I think a lot of communities were written that way.
You got any more questions? Steve?
I'd like to ask, Steve Winter, I'd like to ask a little more detail on our revaluation concern. We contracted with a revaluation firm and that contract specifies certain things. We may have concerns as to whether all those were fulfilled, but it's actually a bigger problem in that the state also has regulations as regards a revaluation. A revaluation should do such and such. Are either of you familiar with, with the state requirements for a revaluation?
Yes, although I, I hope you're not going to quiz us on them, on the specific requirements with numbers.
Perhaps not, but the, part of the problem is the state requirements are not very specific, often general, hence there's considerable leeway for interpretation. One side will have its interpretation, the other folks will have theirs, and it seems to be a somewhat murky issue in its, where our most significant concerns would be in particular in terms of its accuracy, in terms of whether they provided everything the state says they should provide. So that is something of our concern, and do you have any experience in dealing with those interpretations?
I personally do not, but I understand exactly what you're, what you're saying in, in terms of the.
How about other people in your firm?
I, I have yet to walk one of our towns through a revaluation process. Often, and it's one of those issues where often there is. Often, and it's one of those issues where often there is a more specialized consultant that is doing the primary technical type work to set out the, you know, the dollars and cents. It's always dangerous when you get lawyers to try and do math, but-
I've noticed.
Yeah. But the, but ultimately, I think the question you're asking, or maybe get into is, you know, the, this question of is, is the work being done in conforming compliance with the law? And is what is going to be rolled out going to comport with the state regulatory regime? And while I have not had to, like, you know, it's relatively uncommon, revaluations are, you know, they, they, hopefully, they, they don't happen, you know, every, every year. But it's certainly something that, that type of work is the same type of work that I would be undertaking in any other area that is brought to me, which is analyzing what, what is happening on the ground and comparing that to what is required under statute or under state law. We do have at least one attorney at our firm who had done substantial work in the tax evasion space, which is not identical, but deals with a similar area of state statute. And I don't know offhand if he has, in his prior experience working with any municipal clients on revaluation specifically. But those issues of taxation and of evaluation of those specific areas of statute is something that our firm has done in the past and will continue to do for our clients.
Going slightly more into it. There is general language on the state law side that says, basically, they will provide the town whatever is needed to continue the assessment work based on the, on the revaluation that was conducted. And we have seen some revaluations where they provide a fairly extensive set of definitions, characterizations, pictures, descriptions that fits all the different categories, and others that don't provide anything at all. And I would say a general interpretation of the state, state's law in that regard is that they should provide a very substantial amount, which in our particular case, we did not get. So, that is the crux of our concern.
I can absolutely understand that. If you feel like you don't have enough information and something's being told to you that you don't have enough information to verify, I can absolutely understand why you'd be, why you would be questioning it. And I guess we lawyers never want to, you know, we don't, we don't give advice based on not knowing all the facts. So, I probably wouldn't speculate beyond that. But I, you know, I think transparency and thoroughness of any sort of process is something that we always aim to do because if people don't have faith in the process or the information that they're getting, then they're not going to trust the result.
Very accurate.
Which is our situation.
Yeah, and, and it's, and it's tough, it's a, and as you know, as, as public servants, sometimes there are things you can't share because they're confidential by statute. And that is a really difficult line to draw when you can't tell people information that you want to tell them, but you, you actually cannot.
Or don't have it when they're requesting it, or you should have it.
Right.
Do you have any more questions? Do you have anything more you'd like to say?
I just wanted to ask, you know, how many employees the town has? How do you feel about how it's being run? How are your personnel policy? What are those things that you see coming down the pike?
We have a very small crew here at Town Hall in particular.
A lot, a lot of people wearing different hats?
Yes, for sure. We have second positions for animal control, road commissioner, positions like that. We do have a municipal school. So, most of our employees are at the school. We have a very intensive personnel policy. So, we have taken some strides there to create some structure around how we handle personnel issues. Yeah, I mean, there are, there's always challenges with people.
Sometimes with towns you have, you sound like you have update policies that are thorough. And then sometimes you have, you know, a mimeograph from nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah, there's always new laws coming down the pike, like pay relief-
Yeah.
That we need to be aware of, and policies need to be updated. And they should be looked at annually, in my opinion. We don't always find the time to do that. And having a team in place that includes our town attorneys could certainly help with that.
Do you share, sorry, do you share a enforcement officer with any of the communities?
We don't. We're very, very fortunate that we have our own co-enforcement officer. He's also our fire chief. So, the board and the town created a full-time position so that John could serve in both capacities. And it's worked out very well for us.
That's great.
Yeah.
The tax court for the treasurer of our town council, and we also have a town clerk. And that is the in-house staff. Steve?
One more question, Steve Winter. Do you have any other municipal clients within our vicinity, say thirty-five?
We, I don't have a map in my head, but we represent Maida, we represent Andersgård County. I think those would fall within your catchment. Certainly Andersgård County, as it sweeps down.
And recently, we, we did serve general counsel, this conflict counsel for the town of Dresden, for specifically these issues that they were dealing with. So, I've been to this, this neck of the woods-ish in the Nacho's Council.
Once we had a legal counsel that serviced both West Bath and Bath, which was to our detriment.
Yeah, we are, we are very close by, but yeah, our, our current general municipal clients are a little bit far.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for meeting with us.
Thank you for coming.
If there's any other information we can provide, we're, unfortunately, unless we win the lottery, we will be here.
As long as you share.
That was my point.
Thank you very much.
Nice meeting you, everyone. Thank you. Nice meeting you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you, and I think, you know-
My pleasure, thank you for your questions.
I hear some point about you all being selected.
With municipal officers, please.
Yes. I've been a part of that fight before. I would be making-
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
You have an agenda in your progress.
And I do have one on the table, just seconds.
Yes, thank you. I knew I had it here. All right, so, we have, we haven't taken care of the consent agenda. So, not to maybe do that.
Give me one second.
Please. Is that the motion?
Truly accepted as presented.
Certainly. Any discussion? All in favor? Upcoming Select Board meetings on Monday, the seventeenth, at five-thirty at the West Bath Town Hall. We will be having an executive session. Of course, the public is always invited to be first part, which will include the pledge of allegiance. And then we will go into an executive session. And on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, we'll have a regular kind of meeting, like we always do, at five-thirty here at the Town Hall.
And are we, we're already bid for the jeep, and what else?
Winter maintenance for town properties. And, let me look at my list here. The assessors' agent. Those are due next, but I say, but we will discuss them in the meeting on the twenty-seventh. Town clerk resumes are due on the twenty-seventh.
Have you received any yet?
No. And I would imagine you would make a choice for town attorney? If you would like that when your agenda is formed?
Are we adding that in firm kind?
Yes, Freddie Flaherty will be here on the twenty-seventh. And I thought I would put them first on the agenda, if that makes sense?
Yes, it does.
New business, annual appointments. And I have a packet of lists of appointments on the long with the expiration, beginning, no, beginning of their terms and their endings. Let's see, where do we have, no, the endings, that's what we have. We have the, their current terms ending, or when they do end. So, we've had a chance to look at those.
So, they all be, they all begin on July first of this year. They mostly end one year from now, some of them are different. That's why you see the ending, so that's-
Twenty-fifth, the twenty-twenty-five, except for Board of Appeals, Board of Assessment Review, Investment Committee, I mean, Resources, Planning Board, and Planning Board.
And our health officers, if you're kind. Give them to myself.
Yeah, health officer, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed, my apologies to Rick.
I will re-accept the presentation of annual appointments as presented.
Certainly. Any discussion? Carla, the news could be posted when, when, after we make them official, they'll post it on the town website?
Yeah.
Okay. At least in part of the answer. Any, no discussion? All in favor of the appointments as presented? Any opposed? Question carries? There's signing a bunch of papers here.
Keep it in the room.
They want to sell us some car insurance. They're afraid that they're renting. I couldn't explain it. You may talk amongst yourselves.
You got a good joke? Any plans for the Fourth of July? The parade? Heritage Davis? Nothing?
Oh, yeah. So, a lot of volunteers. Thank goodness for that.
Twenty-two of them.
Wow.
Need a stamp. Chance of you, we asked a warrior out to be hiring.
How many minutes would it take for them to discuss that?
Six. So, we're at a grand, like-
After the death of snow to- Is it in terms of six minutes?
That's right, just hang out, click.
A good clock on our side at times, the phone calls to see the drives and bears.
You got your cell phone, I say, well. See if they can get bring it out tomorrow before I get to the concert. It's at the outdoor, yeah.
He's a willing woman.
We're going my way to do it. Got myself the dollar ninety-nine and throwaway poncho, just in case. Since you can't bring a person, right? That's what ponchos are for. Ponchos are like this big, in my back pocket.
Have there been any responses to the assessor RFP?
Because they said they have one.
One inquiry, I expect a proposal. He did say he would submit a proposal, so at least an honesty.
Oh, sprang to turn.
We still have time. Have hit the cutoff, yes.
Okay, under new business? Town administration report, please.
My report is mostly just confirming what you want on your next agenda. So, I have the interview with Freddie Flaherty. Max Johnston will be here from MPAU to talk about signing up for the Community Resilience Partnership. And he wanted to speak with the Select Board first, in particular about setting up a small committee to work. We'll have the opening for the jeep bids. We will discuss whatever proposals we have for the assessors' agent. We will have bids for winter maintenance for town properties. Make a decision on town attorney. I'll update you on whether or not we received any resumes for town clerk. That's all I have for the agenda. Can you think of anything else that needs to be on your agenda?
That's a lot.
That is a lot.
It's one of probably a half-hour conversation with the town attorney first.
So, you want to start at five-thirty, or do you want to try starting at five again?
There's still community from up country, so probably starting at five-thirty would be better for you. So, let's start at five-thirty. And Freddie Flaherty, we can start with their interview and then do-
That makes sense.
That works for you all.
And the only other item I have is that there will be a meeting on the Andersgård Henbeck Trail. There's, Kelch is setting up a working group meeting for July eighth at six P.M. And that will be held here at the Town Hall. will be held here at the Town Office.
What time is that, ten A.M.?
Six P.M.
On what date?
July eighth, it's a Monday.
July eighth.
So I will certainly be there, but I just wanted you to know the issue you're interested.
Since I was at the meeting, is there any news from the warming shelter people?
Yeah, Tetheren Housing, just a lot of bouncing ideas back and forth today. The use of churches was really at the forefront of the discussion of how to handle warming centers.
Yeah.
Overnight warming centers is what they want to call them, because they're concerned at this point that nobody is going to be prepared to have an overnight shelter with beds.
Right.
The thing about churches is that they're exempt from the rules that require a sprinkler system if you have beds. I'm not sure why that is, so-
Because we don't usually have beds in churches, is what I suspect.
Right, right. But the sprinkler system, the sprinkler system is a real barrier to getting actual overnight shelters in place, so when the RFP from May State Housing comes up to apply for funds, they're really trying to hone in on a location, possibly a church or another location, where they can apply to have an overnight warming center, not go as far as having beds yet, and have it staffed, because that's another big issue, is finding people who can actually be at the location.
Right.
I didn't go so far as to offer up West Bath Fire Department, because we are a Red Cross Shelter technically.
Right.
We don't have a lot of capacity.
Right.
And we certainly don't have staff. But at this stage, I'm not sure that that's what they're looking for anyway. They're really looking for something in Bath or Burns or in particular. So it was a good lively conversation today, and I expect that we'll meet again on, not this coming Monday, but the following one, whatever date that is. That meeting will be in Toxum, at the Town Office.
Okay, try to-
So, yeah.
Mondays.
If I have any more information about that, I'll certainly send it along.
Okay. Old business, the warrant for the special town meeting.
Yes, there is a warrant for a special town meeting in your packet, and it's-